On Tuesday, October the 20th, 2020, in the Civic Center at 803 West Holland and via Zoom Conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www.w.citivalpine.com. For the purpose of considering the test agenda, this notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after a determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meetings, comment and question rules and procedures are listed in the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to gcalliton@ci.alpine tex.us. If you have petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be cued upon, given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will call upon on those individuals one at a time, and our meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as our existing signup sheet at the city council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with the ward you reside in or business interest in. If you do not live in or own property in the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits agenda prohibits the council discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and or city council members may call upon order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. And I call this meeting to order. We'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you all very much. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum, and the notice was posted at 5:00 PM on October 16, 2020.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Anybody on cue?
Yes, we have a public comment from Steve Atwood.
Okay.
He'll just, okay, there he is.
Good. Hello, Mr. Atwood.
Oh. My name is Steve Atwood, and I have a few questions regarding the dangerous dog resolution, if I may. I thank you, Mayor, and City Council for their time. I've lived over on Para Road in Ward Two for more than 12 weeks. I just saw that y'all were making some changes to the dog rules. I have a big dog. She looks mean, but she's really nice. I moved here to Alpine from Fireville, Arkansas, because she technically, she killed my wife. Sat on her in her sleep and suffocated her. I've never loved another animal so much. She's a Caucasian shepherd dog. That's not a racial thing. That's just what they call her. Once I saw her rip the throat out of a wolf. But I saw that Section 3.3 of the new proposed rule says that I must get a sign that reads "dangerous dog." I wanted to ask if it's okay if I get one that says murderous dog instead. I think that'd scare potential thieves more. I also saw Section 3. B says, "We must keep them in a secure enclosure of sufficient height and design," that's a direct quote, "to prevent the dogs escape." And to be honest, I think my Lucy dog is possessed by some kind of devil. I've yet to see a cage isn't smart enough to get it out of or into. When I pass, I'll probably have to have her drowned in holy water. But I suppose that's between me and the priest. So I was wondering if the dog's skill and intelligence will be taken into account when these rules are being enforced. That's all the questions I have. Thank you again, Mayor and City Council for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
No, no one else requested a public comment.
Okay, we're gonna go into the proclamations. And, you know, I'm a little invited on this proclamation because the gentleman is was a good friend of mine. And he passed away early on in his life. And but I think it's befitting that the city does recognize him for his achievements in the city. So I'll go ahead and read it. Proclamation by Mayor Andres Ramos, City of Alpine, Texas. Whereas Joe Magoo Torres has served the Parks Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Alpine since 2016. And whereas an active member of the community, Joe Magoo Torres has had a profound impact on City of Alpine, its citizens. And whereas Joe Magoo Torres has always demonstrated compassion, concern for all members of the community. And whereas the passion of Joe Magoo Torres has left the city with a void that will be difficult to fill. And whereas Joe Magoo Torres is an inspiration, embodiment of strength and determined driver of progress. And whereas throughout his civic service engagement, Joe Magoo Torres has made the city of Alpine a better place. Now, therefore, I address Ramos, Mayor of the City of Alpine, Texas, to hereby proclaim October the 18th through October 24th, 2020, as celebrating and honoring Joe Magoo Torres this week in Alpine, and urge all citizens to be aware of the significant impact that he has had in improving the quality of life now for Alpine and families. And witness thereof, I have brought up here on to set my hand on this 16th day of October in the year 2020. Andres Ramos, Mayor. I think that's very befitting that the city does recognize Joe Torres. So I want to thank you all for that. Okay. And we'll move on to, I don't have a report, we'll move on to the city attorney report.
Mayor, Council. Can you all hear me?
Barely.
I've played on the ladders I've been working on since the last city council meeting. We've corresponded with the Park District Cooper. I finally heard back from their lawyer late yesterday. And really didn't really make a counteroffer of much importance. I'll get with the city manager tomorrow and try to come up with a counterproposed strategy. The New York Pacific Railroad case is pending.
City Attorney, we can barely hear you out here, sir.
The the New York Pacific Railroad issue I met with Mr. Zimmer about that late last week. He and the chief have been reached out to by some of the non-lawyer types from New York Pacific. I'm going to file an answer to the lawsuits next week. Answer date is October 27th. And we've moved forward with the lawsuit pending between Pacific, wanting to try to resolve the matter, which of course they should. I can't understand why they don't want to do something in Alpine the way that fixed the matter, make this. Eric's gonna talk about this a little bit in his report, but also I met with him and the place chief of department heads last week about some of the issues regarding this report. We had a good meeting. I asked each department head's their expectations and sort of tear the air between what they want to see done and the municipal report. And we'll be able to achieve all of that. I also provided that the city attorney will do my best to confer with them regarding their cases, but we have to exercise independent judgment. One of the things that makes America great is our separation of powers. Where you have the police, the prosecution, and the judge, where you have three different sets of eyeballs looking at a case. It's not just a rubber stamp. The next matter is law had asked me to do a more detailed report regarding the police department. And I had requested some detailed information regarding that from CEGIS reports, this criminal justice information system reports that stood by the county attorney. And I just got his response this morning. So I haven't had a chance to compare a more detailed report based on it. But when I do, I'll give you all a report from me plus the data I received from the county attorney. The CEGIS reports show between January 1st, 2017 and October 13th, 2020, that the offenses, the cases that are pending, the misdemeanor cases that are pending in Brewster County Court, where the persons have been arrested, but there are no offense reports, that there are a total of 32 cases like that, and 19 of those belong to the Alpine Police Department. Nine of them to the Texas Department of Public Safety, and four of them belong to Soul Ross. So but there's some more details in that that I will put together and share with the council next meeting. One other issue that came up in the last couple of days. A couple of council members have reached out to me regarding the issue of the conduct of the municipal election. And whether everybody who wanted to vote for the city election was being allowed to vote in the city election or not. And digging into it a little bit, the there's an agreement for the voting jointly between the city and the county. Because the governor's proclamation last spring over COVID, the council's decision to postpone the city election from May to November. But the way the election is being handled is still being sort of a separate election by the city. And so the people who come in and they'll get a ballot to vote for the president down to the county offices. Then they have to sort of run, go through the exit line and be asked whether or not they want to get a city ballot or not, or whether they live in the city. And apparently, at least anecdotally, there were some people that thought they weren't being given the city ballots. I checked with Texas Municipal League and the Texas Secretary of State and looked at the law regarding joint elections. And Alpine's agreement was for the city to cooperate with and work with the county elections administrator on the election, but the Alpine operated some election. And the law on joint elections, and most entities doing these things have contract with the election administrator so that there's one person in charge and one ballot. And I asked the ladies from the Texas Municipal League today how Austin handles this issue regarding having people on the ballot from the federal offices down to the county offices, down to the city council the junior college trustees and things of that nature. She says it's all one ballot that it's done in. In Austin, they have to figure out where they know based on where you live, which ballot to get you so that you have the right ballot to vote on. And it goes into one box, and it so that would be that would be my recommendation of the future if we ever do another joint election. I would love to will, because our elections are all about combining the issue, I think it's anyway, it's been marked to the intention of the voting, the election administrator. Like, everybody's gonna be notified, tracked, voted, and lived out. So finally, I followed up on the resolution, Councilor Stevens, that you had last time regarding the jail.
Yep.
And talked about it with the county judge and the sheriff. And the county judge basically says he doesn't he didn't quite agree with everything in that resolution that he didn't really agree with. That he agrees to the terms of it, that then he let me listen to the recording of that meeting. I listened to it, and it was basically the district attorney talking about how there needs to be an agreement. Needs to be something done. And the sheriff, or the county judge, a couple of times said, well, yeah. We need to talk to the sheriff, because the sheriff's in charge of the jail. And that was basically what I heard from the audio. But my takeaway from that is I think there still needs to be some further dialogue and agreement between the two entities, the city and the county, regarding that issue. I'm sure that the county is in sync with the resolution 2020, actually.
Still have a number of questions.
Yes, sir.
So first, at the meeting on October 7th, you talked about there being 39 cases for lack of probable cause. So I heard tonight is there are 32 over a three-year period. Is that correct?
Those are two different categories, Council, and those will be noted in the report I give.
Well, I'm just trying to, so when you say two different categories, Rod, you said tonight there are 32 cases.
Where no reports have been filed
No reports.
To support the arrest.
Okay, and
And that's different than a case that was declined for lack of probable cause.
Okay, so when will you have that data?
I expect to have that report to y'all at the next meeting. As I told you, I just received this stack of information.
No, I was not, I'm just trying to understand. So there are 32 cases for lack of reports? And would you have no additional data relative to lack of probable cause at this time?
I have. I did receive some data on that, but I haven't had a chance to scrub it and categorize it and try to put it into a format understandable to you and the council.
Okay, good. Well, and in my view, one of the things that will be important when you pull that data together is enough specificity so that council can decide what actions, including investigations, it wants to take relative to that matter.
I understand, and I'll, that's right. I want to do a professional report to y'all, a quick and dirty one.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good. The next question, relatives to the jail, you met with the judge, did you also meet with the sheriff?
Yes.
Okay, and I know thus far that Chief Martin has reached out to the sheriff, but the sheriff has not yet responded. Did you have any discussions about why he's not yet responded to Chief Martin or to the city manager?
I didn't. I just, I just asked him if he'd seen the agreement, the resolution, and if he agreed to it.
Okay, so I mean, from my standpoint, from a council standpoint, there have been so many outrages to the sheriff, and he's still not responding back because the administrative matter needs to be handled by the city manager and our chief of police. So next time to see him, you might encourage him to say, hey, why aren't you not returning the ballots or emails or letters?
I'll pass it on to him this time of the conference.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Hello.
Okay. All righty. Any more questions for the city attorney?
What Lucy was just commenting about, Mayor, was the importance of getting an announcement out on the radio so that our residents know they've got two ballots to work. One is for the main election, and then make sure they pick up their secondary ballot or their additional ballot, second ballot, not secondary, but the second ballot to be able to vote in the city elections.
I think that would be important, Councilor Stevens.
Yeah.
There's no science, but at polls, it's saying city election
Yep.
in error.
Yep.
You must request the city election ballot. There's no science that say that. So it can be confusing if you're not very
No question.
And I had a lot of people that, the older people were actually writing in my name. So I told Rodney that he might
Well, so you're writing for sheriff as well?
They're writing in my name.
There we go.
So because they didn't know that there was another one.
Okay, so Eric, does that help you all work?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get a PSA out tomorrow and just run a cycle on it.
Yeah, and then you might ask somebody to get a sign at each of the election locations. That it just in big bold print. You know, if you're a resident of Alpine, pick up your city ballot over there.
Councilor Stevens, this is Cynthia over. There is a sign, once you leave the general and federal elections, when you're voting for the county, you have to exit only one way out. And as you're getting to that section of the building, there is a sign that says, City of Alpine Elections. And then the, the people working the elections will ask you if you're within the city limits and that you need to vote for the city election.
Well, that's good. The PSA will probably help them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. And Ms. Nausenbaum, I talked to her this morning because of those complaints, and she was speaking to her staff there to make sure that she, they would ask everybody whether they lived in the city or not. So she had a number of complaints already when I got there about eight, nine, about nine o'clock this morning. So she's addressing that issue. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the city manager report.
Share my screen. All right. There we go. Want to start off with the COVID update, I think, as everybody's aware. You know, after Dr. Escobar's departure, we have been without a local health authority. Dr. Sonae in El Paso has been helping Judge Kano, Stephanie Elmore, out with some of the reporting. Stephanie Elmore has also been continuing to spearhead the local testing. And then Chris Rujia on our team works together with Stephanie and puts out the flyers that everybody sees on the website and in the PSA. So we've got both a Spanish and an English version of those. Next testing coming up very soon. Alpine will experience testing about every two to three weeks. And they're also working to test more high-risk people, too. So I think really, really good work from that group. Moving forward, I wanted to share one of the slides that ACTA has historically shared. But it really looks at the new reported cases in Texas. As you'll see on that top left, the light colored are the daily stats, and then the red color are the seven-day moving average trend. So what we've seen really from, I'll call it the early part of September until now, is a slight uptick, certainly not the uptick that some of the other states have had. The chart on the lower right is the new reported deaths by day in Texas. Once again, the light gray is the day-to-day stats. And the darker line is the seven-day moving, moving average. So that particular trend continues to move in the right direction, which is, which is lower. The, moving forward, one of the items that we've been talking about recently are these five metrics to follow, which generally says, you know, hey, what do your hospitals look like? You know, what are your, your new COVID infections looking like? What is that ARNOT or that Texas, the reproduction rate? So the goal there being less than one, meaning every person that gets COVID, they're spreading to less than one other individual. And then our testing positivity rates. We were looking at average weekly testing there on the national level. At the international level, we're starting to look more on contact tracing being very important as a fifth metrics as well. You know, moving forward, looking at what that means for Brewster County, this was told yesterday. Our, our new cases, the thing I like about this, this site that's out there, this website, is it does the color coding and allows you to see whether you're, you're red, orange, yellow, or green. And you can see specifically that we've had more new cases, 31 for 100,000 recently. So that puts us in, in that red category. Our infection rate or that ARNOT factor that we want to be below one, we popped up to 1.37. Our positive test rate, though, is down sub 5% or 2.8. And then our ICU headroom used, which is really, you know, what's the capacity of our local hospital? You know, we're in good shape there. Rick Flores and I, and certainly he and members from his team are on the call this evening. We had a great conversation yesterday about the capacities and capabilities at our local hospital. So really glad to, to have Rick working with us on, on these key, key items. The other thing I thought would be interesting to look at is from a Texas perspective, is ARNOT for this reproduction rate is below one from a Texas level. So we're, you know, once again, we're a little bit higher, but the state of Texas is lower. And so that's, that's a good thing to, to help minimize and mitigate spread. The next slide is really this daily slide that Brewster County puts out on their Facebook page. Certainly, it's, it's a little bit of an eye chart. But if you go to the John Hopkins site and drill into it, those that are interested, there's really some nice data. And they, they've done a good job at really drilling it down to the state and local levels, too. So this is for Brewster County here. Right now, we've got 27 active cases. I think we're actually down to one hospitalization versus the two. So that, that's a good thing. So relative to COVID, I'll stop there and answer any questions. This morning, we talked about yesterday's report showed two. Like, we're certainly capable of handling, he's got, you know, upwards of 25. And I think he could beds and he could expand from there. ICU is certainly smaller than the 25, but they're prepared to handle if we were to have. But one other thing I would say too, on the CV team meeting this morning, and talking to Michael Pacheco, who works for Pete Geigo at the university. Michael has been spearheading all of the testing for the university students, and they've been testing about 600 students a week. The last couple of weeks, their positive rates have come down just slightly below 10 on average per week. And so, if you remember a couple of weeks ago when we were talking, there seemed to be a rise the first four or five weeks the kids were back on campus, that Michael reported this morning. That's come down a little bit. Becky McCutcheon also reported from the school district that they've had one teacher, two students, and one substitute have tested positive, though they categorized that substitute as part of the AIST family because that person is around some of the children in the school. So, at the school, not as aggressive as the university. You know, the university has just made a really hard push to set up testing there on campus. So, a lot of what you're really seeing is on our mobile test sites, or if they go to their physician because they're feeling unwell, then those students or teachers from the university will get tested. Some of them will go out. You know, one of the things we pushed several weeks ago was if you're in a industry where you're having more touch points with people, so think of the grocery stores, think of the schools, think of those types of places. How do we get them more aggressive testing to try to catch a positive COVID case early? You know, the other thing I would say, the, we certainly get calls into city hall relative to masking. How well are people masking? How well are people social distancing? Those, those are very important. I think as we head into the fall season, how we understand if somebody's ill, they need to stay home, that's very important. It's going to be even more important as we enter what will be, you know, the flu season, which we're coming up on too. And so, talking to Rick Flores yesterday, he and I were conversing on some of the better branding that's going out there to alert people relative to what the flu brings, the dangers of COVID. How do you be mindful of everything? So, we're working on a piece to get out, not only on our website, but publicly through PSAs and things of that nature. Because we certainly find that if we can do some education, that really is the best portion path for us.
Eric, did you talk, so we're also about letting the community enter some of their testing? Does there any ability to do that?
I have not asked Michael directly on that. I know he's the guy doing most of the testing himself. It'll be a good question to ask him. He may cry uncle. He may say, hey, somebody else can set stuff up. He is, he is really, you know, when they talk about a super spreader with COVID, I call him a super tester.
You know.
I mean, he's really out there, but I'll have a conversation.
So, what happens like if people are in a store and one of them is wearing a mask and the other one isn't? And what that is becomes? I mean, if there's some kind of question, why not be just one of them isn't wearing a mask?
Right, right, yeah. So, that's a great question. Yeah, and that one, that one actually did come up this week. But the question came up, not, not an aggressive incident in a store. But the store owner is typically going to be the first person, or their manager's going to be the first person to talk to the individual that wouldn't be wearing a mask. If they don't feel comfortable with that, and they, you know, they've got the posting out there, we always encourage them to call APD, and we'll have an officer go to the store. If an individual doesn't put the mask on and the store owners ask them to, the store owner would ask that person to leave. And if they choose not to leave, then the officer would remove them based on a criminal trespass. So, that's how that will plan. We obviously don't want to get to that point, but certainly, we try to make that available because we know, the other side of it is I talked to some of the business owners. You know, they're concerned because it's a smaller community. They don't want to have friction with their clientele. It's a real delicate balance out there. So, we're trying to, certainly with our events, like the midweek mercantile, I think we'll, you know, we'll get set up with the Halloween, and really pushing that good visual around everybody wearing a mask, the accountability of that. We feel like that sets a great example.
So, the university and what Michael's been doing up there, what he's doing up there, are really doing a phenomenal job because they got segregation going on in terms of places they can put people so they can fit. They still have studies, but they stay away from everyone else. When we talked about this last time, Saul Roswell was in about half the cases. When I look at the data you have on the screen right now, you know, there's a dozen of them about a week or so ago. Was that, where's the university? I mean, they're working like half the population of the COVID cases. Do you have any idea if the university is still driving it, or what's going on?
The, so, good question because the attachment of where the COVID case comes from is the home zip code of the individual. And so, if we had, just, you know, the last two weeks, we have 18 students or faculty nomination test positive. Those that are 79830 or 31 or 32 are going to get counted in the Brewster County number. But those that are from El Paso or Houston or whatnot get counted back in their home county. And so, it's not a real subset of the Brewster County number. It's a partial subset.
Okay, well, the last time I had this discussion, whatever occurred, Saul Ross was getting counted. So, we at least had some sense about where things were emanating from.
What you're telling me is this state doesn't reflect that? Correct. The stuff on the state-level reporting only shows the 79830.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't know how to exactly break down. I could ask Michael.
You might ask Michael. I actually talked to him, and I talked about everything.
Yeah. If they could just give us, you know, out of their population of active cases, how many are Brewster County, then we would know specifically.
Thanks.
Any other questions on COVID? So, the next slide that I've got is, had it in everybody's packet too. We've got, you know, our chart here with our different advisory boards and commissions. And don't be alarmed by the Ward Four because we need to recognize that Magoo was sitting on two of those boards. So, when I looked at that, I thought, oh, Lucy, please don't get upset. It, but, you know, we do have some vacancies out there. And I think our real call to action right now is finding citizens who are interested and participate and have a passion, whether it's for the parks or for planning and zoning. Most specifically, I'd really like us to be able to develop a few people for the transportation committee almost, you know, by the next meeting, by the November 3 meeting. The reason for that is you'll see in the next couple of slides that I have is San Angelo is moving vast and furious on some of their intermodal planning. And we need to really sit down as a group with our transportation committee, form some goals, work back with council on setting the pathway for 2021. So, I would ask council that if you know anyone who's interested in that transportation committee, please work with us to source them in the next 10 days. We do have five vacancies, one at large, and then four or so. And then, of course, in those portions of discussion, if you come across other people that are interested for some of these other boards and committees, that would be fantastic. Any questions on that one?
No, thank you.
So, then our transportation committee, as I said, you know, the goal is to get this committee filled or at least have five people on it. So, we're close to five of the seven positions. Because we need to really address those current state of projects that are in motion. The San Antonio, or I'm sorry, San Angelo Intermodal Project along with the Highway 67 corridor planning, and those deliverables from that corridor planning. Most specifically, the contemplation of bypasses for both truck and train. But then also contemplation around quiet zone, something else. Certainly, the Rocket alluded to earlier with our forensic at Union Pacific. You know, if we can create some sort of off-plan, crew change plan for them as well. So, very important that we get this team together fairly quickly. First meeting, the goal would be to have that in the middle of November. So, please help in sourcing some of those candidates for us.
I have a question on getting, well, that's if you, there are more trains coming, you know, like fails.
Yes.
Having increased a lot.
Yes.
And they're getting longer.
And longer too, and less and longer, right?
Yes, they are. Correct. We really need to take action now because what we don't want to do is wake up 15 years from now and look back and say, gosh, why didn't we do anything in 2020? Because this is really the golden opportunity. I mean, that corridor planning study is done. Texas, the local Texas unit got an award for it. And two of the items they called out in there were real specific to us moving some of that traffic out of town.
Well, in the other part, we talked about our, as part of that transportation activity, our streets are certainly getting clogged up in the morning. Tough getting across on the 180 or going across 118 when they're working Holland and East Avenue. You know, it's, the traffic jams are starting because we've got more and more.
Yeah, very much so. And, you know, it's real interesting because I do walk. My father and I walk every morning. We typically come down either Avenue E or Holland. And it was very interesting during the meet of COVID, there was very little traffic. But we were talking about it this morning, just the volume of traffic has come back between the six and seven o'clock hour. So, that's just a precursor to, once the workday starts, the backups along Avenue E, Holland, and whatnot.
Eric, I wanted to make a comment on the transportation planning. It's something I learned from working out in the last couple of years in Pecos. We worked really hard to try to get a loop around Pecos. Worked really hard to not just get a loop around Pecos, to get a loop that would be designed and built and paid for by Texas. And, of course, they had a bigger traffic problem in Alpine because of 285, 230, that were downtown Pecos. However, it took all that pushing, and you don't really get their attention until you finally acknowledge it, and then they put it in their 10-year plan.
Right.
So, when they finally put it in their 10-year plan, that means you're going to get it maybe in 10 years. But unless it's in the 10-year plan, they're not going to do anything. So, it's important to push to get it done, even if it's not going to be done immediately.
Yeah, and that's where I think that Highway 67 corridor planning, final product, and the fact that they got an award on it, and the fact that it did have those key components in there as outputs from that plan. So, we've just, I believe if we can get our transportation committee energized and really just start coming forward with some goals and objectives and tying Texas in, and then certainly working with our partners at the railroad, both Transpacifico as well as Union Pacific. I think that's what we've got to do. Because to your point, it's 10, 12 years down the road before the projects really do get done.
But it would be here before we knew it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll wake up, and it'll be 10 years from now. Good. So, the San Angelo Intermodal announcement came out a week or so ago. And they've dedicated 182 acre tract of land. And really, that's a vision. I know we met with Guy and some of the other team members, Michael, I think is one gentleman's name, and a few others from San Angelo. They really are excited about the Transpacifico and feel like this is going to drive their economy there as a good stopping point between those trains coming across from Presidio, heading up towards Dallas. And so, this will be a project for them that'll push work on that track that Transpacifico's on, or Texas Pacifico, right now. So, very important to keep our eyes on this as well. Any other questions on the train? And I've just got one other point to go over. I've gotten a few questions lately, really relative to code enforcement. And the questions center around, how does somebody get multiple tickets? So, how does somebody get 50 tickets? How does somebody get 90 tickets? And one of the things I wanted to do is just kind of take a step back and say, hey, you know, when council adopted the current book of ordinances that we utilize, which is December of 1999, Section 4 of that, which is the front page, talks about what are the provisions around fines, you know, not exceeding $500. I've had that question. But also, you know, if there are fire or safety zoning, public health, or sanitation, then those types of fines could go upwards of $2,000. The other statement, and I put it in bold and underlined, "Each act of violation and each day upon which any such violation shall occur shall constitute a separate offense." This really falls in line with what the state of Texas also has from a state law perspective. And what that means is if you hit that point where you're in violation, if you don't resolve that violation, the next day, you could certainly be issued another citation. So, that's what our current book of ordinances read. Now, thinking or moving forward into a particular example, I'm not going to use folks' names. Just looking at code enforcement one, we had this one that had over 90 cases. The first five were from 2011 to 2018. Those were primarily expired license plates registration. And then there was another 85 tickets that started from earlier this year. They were home occupancy, junk cars, hazardous materials. And there were really multiple offenses there. And when you add those offenses together, and then somebody doesn't resolve them, and the enforcement officer comes out and cites them again, if you've got four or five cases going, it's very easy to get up to 50, 60, 70 fairly quickly. This particular case file or cases, the court cost, mine structure looked at court costs of a little over 7,000, fines of over 10,000, fees of a little over 2,000, so that total 19,000, of which $231 will pay. Most of the rest, you know, were not assessed. So, that is one.
So, before you leave that case, so this is an individual who illegally operated a home business using residential area.
Correct.
And chose to continue to do that.
Correct.
They had the junk cars, and has all this stuff been cleaned up and the business been stopped?
He's cleaned up about 95% of it. We still have a couple of small items he had committed to do. And we've got to tidy those. But the wrecked vehicles that were in the front yard, I mean, it's just plain visual blight. Finally got rid of those. And, you know, the challenge that we have in our offices too is that many times we get calls from realtors who are trying to sell homes close to it, and they're really somewhat distressed. And property owners who live close to it are distressed because they realize, you know, somebody's running this home business with a bunch of junk cars, makes it very tough for them to sell a home. So, we are pushing very hard, and that's why we see those multiple tickets in those situations. Most folks, you know, 90% of the folks, 95%. Uh most folks, you know, ninety percent of the folks, ninety-five percent of the folks, when we give them a citation, uh the simple question is, what can I do to resolve this and and take action? But this one, yes, was.
So and your practice now, I think you described with city council meeting is that if Tony goes out to write something or from a code violation standpoint, it's ten days before a citation is actually issued. Is that correct?
So the citation is issued, we give them ten days to clean it up.
Okay.
If uh because technically, the way the ordinance is written is they're out of compliance, so you issue the citation. There's not a warning provision
Okay.
in in the code of ordinances. If they clean it up or they work with him, uh either the case doesn't get filed or if he's filed it on day ten or eleven, then he files a paper with Lorena in the court that says, hey, this person's uh resolved the issue and then they never show up on the docket.
Okay.
Um so we see that and that was what David Hale had spoke about at the last meeting, those fifty plus people that had just resolved their issues.
Yep.
And that that's our preference um to to have those folks because some of them simply just don't understand or know uh the ordinances, though I would also say some of them there there's there's just some basic understanding, hey, you know, you can't run a a junk junk yard in your front yard.
Yeah.
Uh that's just should be common knowledge.
So I have a question, like like the, like I know that we just had that whole pickup.
Correct.
So and I know that a lot of people are asking, when they were wondering why they're sitting at the pickup. I know I've seen it on on a website that we had to call in.
Right.
And let it let them know. So and they're only allowed to pick up certain things.
Correct. So so yeah, Texas disposal does the bulky trash pickup. The the ordinance is written in um so people are supposed to call in, it it spells out how many items they can have and of what nature. It it's for residential purposes, it's not for commercial. So if somebody's running a uh a business or they have properties that they're managing, um the the ordinance is really designed for residential use. And we really are trying to get people into the habit of what the ordinance spells out and that is, you know, call ahead of time so that we've got it on the radar, we go pick it up. So you know, that's really the basic tenet there. We do have some folks who, you know, put stuff out, they didn't call in and then they call us a week later and um John Nelson and and staff, you know, I talked to him on a couple of them, they went out and resolved and it got picked up, so.
And does the city do any kind of picking up or any of the, you know, any other stuff? But it's like now, the residents, like, did they give out? Do they think that, like, because most of them are just picked up?
Well, so i- if somebody illegally puts stuff by the dumpster, which which is a large problem in the community, we try to find out who it is and then we we sent Tony out there first to write him a citation uh for illegal dumping. And then if we can find who that person was, we'll cite them and then express to them that they're obligated to resolve it. Uh if they don't, and the city has to go resolve it, we then would assess that person's costs uh which which we can do via the ordinance uh for the remediation of that. But that's dependent on us being, you know, having the knowledge of who did it. And there are times we, you know, we are very able, I mean, when somebody takes and cuts a whole bunch of trees or brush down and sticks it next to the dumpster, um we can generally walk through the neighborhood and figure out who did it.
Yeah, I I run a business, I found out we've got some vacant properties in Alpine and I got dumpsters sitting on the property that's vacant. And neighbors will take all their stuff and throw it right in the middle of their vacant lot. So I have to, and literally, I go, I don't call TDS, I go get my trailer, throw it in the back and haul it out to the dump. Frustrating, but that's what people are out of it. We will pick up, I think it's a great service the city provides, but if people are hauling their stuff out, throw it in the trailer, haul to the dump.
Yeah, and and unfortunately, as as you know, Rick stated, you know, if you own a property and somebody illegally dumps on your property, it's it's your responsibility. That's that's a tough pill for some folks to to swallow, but um now, we're getting better with people putting cameras out and uh they would send in an image or whatnot if if they caught. The the next case, I'm sorry. Here we go. Uh, close to fifty cases, forty-four of them, from September of twenty nineteen through September of this year. Uh this particular individual, lots of animals at large, tickets, no license, no microchip. So a lot of times when you go out and catch an animal at large, you'll see whether they have a license or a microchip. Uh no vaccination. Uh was interesting enough, he did have one speeding ticket too. Um the court costs on this are a little over three thousand, fines of three thousand. Only seven, eight dollars and fifty cents has been paid to date. This one really concerns me because it's it's we get called or we're out of control and it's the same individual over and over again. And so when the animals run at large, and for all full disclosure, that's just an image I picked off the web, that's not those particular animals. Uh but the uh what we don't want to have happen is we don't want the animal to harm another person, a child. Um and this is where we really need our court system uh to help us be successful with a particular case like this. And uh this is, you know, it's for for health and safety of the rest of our our community. And uh we do have a lot of animals at large uh issues and and you see that in Jennifer's reports where we get the bites and and things of that nature too, so. Questions on this particular case? Right, and now that that it's getting darker sooner, uh more people are out in the evening and it is a little spooky if a dog comes up to you.
Well, and and I would just point out in the data that you provided on our package, Eric. You know, what the the big biggest complaints I get from people are, how come the police are not writing citations to speeders? And how come we have so many dogs running around and why isn't the city doing something about it? There are a hundred and sixty-nine cases of animal at large that are pending. Not even worth, that are pending. It says, you know, Jennifer and her team are out doing their work. There are eighty-five cases of dogs with no licenses. There are fifty-four cases of dogs with no microchips. I'm just thinking, oh, come on, give me a break. So this is where, in my view, it's really coming upon our court system to go take care of it because, you know, and and speeders. There are a hundred and seventy-five pending cases of speeding in Alpine that people have had. A hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah.
A hundred and s- and I just look and say, oh my goodness. Uh I tell you, the other thing that was frankly frightening and disappointing where there are eighty cases of minors consumption of alcohol.
Yes.
Uh and so I just, it's a great report, I know, it's uh it's out from the city's standpoint. Uh because we publish what goes on from the city council standpoint, but I I it just, in my opinion, we've got lots of work to do relative to getting our prosecutions done because the issue, as you pointed out last time, about sixty percent of the people come pay their fines, take care of it, they don't do it. It's the repeat offenders
Right.
that are not being compliant and we have to have action. To me, that's the simple message out of this thing.
Yeah, and and especially with this particular case here, I mean, Jennifer and her team have been working it for a year now. Uh it doesn't mean that this person won't slip up, but I mean, hey, you know, we've assessed over three thousand dollars in fines and the individual's paid seventy-eight dollars and just continues to do it over and over and over and over and over here. You know, so what what else can we do from an administrative standpoint?
So I'm curious, I I mean, I'm understanding that giving the license or the permit, that that's their dog, right? What about if people aren't too comfortable with microchips? Do they have to have that?
No, that's that's the city ordinance.
They need to pass a ordinance since I've been on council and we're more monitors.
Right.
I mean, I have a friend who, where they can get it wrong, is when you pay society.
Right.
Yeah.
And our cost from a city perspective is quite low. It's like twenty-five dollars to have a microchip. And you you know, when when we debated that many years back, the the idea was if you can't pay twenty-five to put a microchip, how are you gonna be able to pay veterinarian costs and food costs and proper care costs for an animal?
I think I paid Jen one.
Yeah, if you go to the, if you go to the vet, the the vet will charge you closer to fifty to sixty for for putting in a microchip. But we keep the the price as low as we can. You know, once again, I mean, um investment in an animal, you know, if if they if they can't pay for the microchip, then what else are they not able to maintain for the animal? Any other questions?
Got a question. Okay, at at the animal shelter, they do uh, they do uh give the the microchip to the to the dogs. But why, is there a a legal issue with them uh giving them a rabies shot or the distemper and all that?
What do you, what do you mean a legal issue?
Well, is there, you know, is there, is there a liability that is the reason why they're not doing that at the at the shelter?
So um I'm not certain exactly what Jennifer does administer there. She might be on the, hey, Geo, do you see Jennifer on there? Can you unmute her?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, um so it legally, we are not allowed to issue rabies vaccination. Um that has to come from a licensed veterinarian. Um and that's, that's just laws. Um for distemper parvo and things like that, um we can administer that to our own animals, just as people can if they get them from a feed store. Um but we cannot, we cannot issue that for the public. Um that is also a a legal, a legal thing.
Okay, that's, you answered my question.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Jennifer. All right, next we've got Heather and Chris.
Hi, so I'm gonna start things with um just going over some numbers quickly um and kind of how operations have been going at the visitor's center. We initially allowed guests back into the visitor's center Memorial Day weekend um with some safety precautions in place. Um we were not having them sign into our guest guestbook at that time. Uh when there was a large outbreak of COVID cases in June, we went back to serving people from the port for about a month. And once uh more research showed that the virus was not being transmitted by uh contact on surfaces in late July, we reopened the restrooms and allowed guests to start signing into the um book again. Uh we're now operating with fast uh the face mask mandates in place and limiting the number of people into the building at a time since it is a small space that we're in. But um so the the people signing into the guestbooks is not as accurate um right now because we did have different restrictions in place for part of this time. Uh the last week of July, when we had people back in and they were signing in, we had thirty people, total twenty-three signed, seven did not. Uh mostly, we're all from Texas. In August, uh we had a hundred and sixty-four guests. A lot of people still weren't comfortable signing in at that time. Um so we only know uh of those that signed in, that sixty-one were from Texas. The majority of the guests, though, are right now coming from uh big cities around us. Then um in September, we had a total of uh two hundred and fifty-seven guests, a hundred and seventy signed in, eighty-seven did not. Of the hundred and seventy that signed in, again, a majority of them were from Texas, a hundred and sixty-one of them that signed in were from Texas. So um that's in line with what we've seen in the past with most of our guests coming from Texas. It's definitely the case right now. People are not traveling as far. But they want to get away, so they are coming back to the big bed um and visiting us. We've um made some changes with um how we contact guests, uh potential guest visitors. Uh we used to, that they could request information about Alpine and we'd send a general promo packet out to them. We are now sending a postcard that's encouraging them to start planning their visit on our website. And then if they still prefer printed material or can't find what they're looking for, um they can contact us um either through the website or call me directly and tell us what um attractions they want more information on. So um we also get uh, I get phone calls with people who haven't even requested information before that just want information on Alpine. So uh with that, in July, I sent out two hundred and sixty-six postcards. Um of those that went out, six requested additional information and then I had um four direct requests for information. In August, I sent out a hundred and sixty-six postcards, um one had requested more information. And then in uh September, I sent out two hundred and fifty-six um postcards, five requested additional information or printed information, um and then I had four direct requests. I also sent out um relocation packets, which are a little bit different. They have more um real estate um information, uh hospital information. A lot of people have requested information on our churches. So um in the quarter, I sent out nine of those. Um in addition to all this, I did some special event and media packets. I did ninety uh packets for the ranch rodeo. And then I did um forty for the stable performance car show that was just um uh two weekends ago. Um I've also done uh three gift bags that local businesses helped me put together for the um Texas Country Reporter had people in town um doing stories and I got uh different examples of things that are made here in Alpine um by local people and with their business cards and everything and uh left the gift bags for them at their hotel. Uh also just did three uh packs for uh gift packs for a family travel blogger who was in town with her kids um to do some stories. So that was some additional stuff that we did. As I said, we were operating a little different um during the height of COVID. Uh we did utilize that time to make some changes at the visitor's center. Um while we were closed and limiting them to the porch, we did some low-cost improvements to both the exterior and interior of the building. Uh indoor, indoor decor, um we did paint the inside building. It was like a dark green. We've lightened it up. It's a very happy yellow now, kind of matches our overall yellow and blue um look of our website and a lot of our marketing material. Um we've also added a section in in the visitor's center of where are you from? It's a new map that has um the uh that's the the next slide, please. Um but we have a a new map of that uh shows where people are from. They can put a pin in the map and let us know where they're from. Uh I've also get lots of requests from visitors wanting to know uh where they can get postcards and souvenirs. Um so while we don't sell anything here at the visitor's center, I started collecting from the businesses what uh souvenirs they have uh for Alpine and I have their business cards. So when people see the stuff here, I can tell them what stores to go to, where they're gonna find more um things that say Alpine, because that's a a huge request. Um I've also added a computer for guest use. Uh it's got a large screen that's wall-mounted. That's been important with um a lot of the attractions requiring pre-registering. Um and it is hooked up to my printer, so if they need to print a ticket or a pass to get into parks and things like that, they can do that there. Um I've also added a kids section. We know that our largest demographic of visitors is families um looking for experiences for their kids. So we have a kids section that offers um coloring pages, take care of Texas activity books. Um and then it just so happened that the kids started coloring the pictures right here, so we've created a a whole wall display in the visitor's center of everything that kids are coloring and they're putting their names and dates and stuff on it. Um so we worked on all of that inside with the interior. Uh next slide goes into some of the stuff we worked on outside. Uh did a big cleanup on the outdoor display case. It's a really nice wooden case, but it needed not just materials updated, but it needed some cleanup on that. Um and then did yard, a massive yard cleanup with um new flowers. Uh there, you're seeing the flowers that are not gonna die, which is nice. Um the rocks are a cactus rock display, but um we actually have grass now at the visitor's center. That was um part of the big yard cleanup. Um we created a rock garden in the far back corner, which has been really popular with, again, families with kids. There was hopscotch back there. There's some flowers and and different things um that created a family play area. Um and then the next slide, we've also um been updating and changing regularly the large display that's out front. Um it obviously is the Cowboys with the cutouts, but it's been now, uh it was a huge graduation display. Did a Fourth of July, we did a flag and then for fall, it's set up as a picture display. Um the new Miss Rodeo, Saw Ross, came out and they did some pictures of her in our yard, um highlighting the the fall decor. Uh some of the other stuff that have been Some of the other stuff that I've been working on is kind of COVID-related projects. Helped Chris work on the outdoor dining signs that you'll see up at the restaurants. That was something that you, as a council, decided, you know, you wanted to highlight and encourage. And we've got still more of those signs available for restaurants that are offering outdoor dining, just to let people know that it is available. So it's a sidewalk sign that's out. I created the restaurant safety pledge. It is a check system for restaurants. We have restaurants that have committed to participating. They're highlighted on our website. There's been ads that have run for them on the radio. And then we have display cards here in the visitor's center to give guests, letting them know who's participating. I also is the distribution point for the lodging safety pledge that Chris worked on. And the, the short-term rentals have come here to pick up those and try to get as many of those displayed as possible. Obviously, with the lodging, a lot of those are more important on the digital side rather than visually seeing the checkmark. But the checkmark for the restaurants, that's part of the ad campaign saying, look for the green checkmark to know who's participating. And some other COVID-related stuff, getting promotional material to the short-term rentals has been really important during all of this, especially when the park was closed. It was nice to be able to provide them with information about the surrounding parks. The loop around Fort Davis has been popular with visitors because it is something that is always open and they can do regardless of what's happening, good for social distancing. I also worked on the work-from-home content that is on the city website. That kind of grew out of COVID when more people were working from home. So I created the, the content that you find on that section of the city website. Also growing from talking with the restaurants, we've created a new Facebook group. It's Alpine Texas Eats. It's a public group that's anyone can see. Because when visitors come into town, they don't know the names of all of our restaurants and how to find their daily specials. So I'm not necessarily creating new content for that Facebook group. I'm mostly sharing from all the restaurants. But it gives me some place that I can send visitors to to find information about all the restaurants there. Some of the other things that I'm working on right now, event planning and assistance. We had a very successful Harvest Moon with the Alpine Downtown Association. I provided them with the mural tour materials, a art walk promos to be handed out during that, and the health and safety signage that they had in place. Also with that, they had created a really nice kind of game to go with the mural tour. So that's added to our mural tour. We have that available now here in the visitor's center. It's focusing on the alley art section of the mural tour. Also with event planning, as Eric talked about a little bit earlier, we have the Midweek Mercantile and Music. This is a new weekly event that's being hosted by Visit Alpine. We are, Chris and I work together with various city departments. It's been a great example of city departments working together. The Streets guys have come and helped put up new tables in the visitor's center lawn. We've got the parks is coming and, you know, maintaining the yard for the event. We've got PD that comes out here and helps get all the barricades and everything set up for that. So it's a lot of people working together to help us make this happen. It is every Wednesday from four to seven. We're running it through the end of November. We've had a number of vendors come out, offering all kinds of different things. Homemade goods, jewelry, lots of masks. There's canned goods, baked, baked breads and treats. There's been... The museum has been out here selling some of the stuff from their, from their visitor, or from their gift shop. So we've had various different vendors out here. The number of vendors has been growing each week, even though it's been super hot. Wednesday's been, Wednesday evenings have been pretty warm. So I'm ready for the weather to break and us not have that to contend with anymore. And then we also have music on the lawn during the event. It's promoting Alpine as a music-friendly city. So that has been a nice added element to it. And this is a completely free event for Alpine residents to come out and enjoy. It is, we've got another, we've got another one tomorrow. We've got, it's gonna be a picker's circle. So it'll be kind of like an acoustic music circle out there. And we've got more X-books, like I said, all the way through the end of November. November twenty-fifth is gonna be the last event we hold, the last event we hold. There's lots of family-friendly activities out here, too, that are free. We've got sidewalk chalk for the kids. The Family Crisis Center has had pumpkin painting for kids, to paint a purple pumpkin for Devastation Violence Awareness Month. We've got bags out here for people to play cornhole. So it's been lots of families out here to enjoy the, a safe fall event. And that, like I said, will continue and invite everyone out to join us. We do have some upcoming events for the rest of the year. We've got the Alpine Halloween Trailer Treats, which y'all, I know, talked about at your last city council meeting. So we're working on organizing that at Coconut Park. Again, a bunch of city departments are coming together. We're gonna have, the police officers are gonna pass out the candy. The Parks guys are putting a path through Coconut Park to make it a little bit smaller loop for young ones to walk. And the Streets is gonna put up barricades. So again, we've got a bunch of different people working together to make that happen. We do need candy donations from the community. The barrels are up at both of the Porter stores. You can buy the candy and just donate it right back. We also are taking donations here at the visitor's center or at the, there at City Hall or at the police department. So we're gonna make all those candy bags and we, you know, need, we need the candy to fill them, because that's gonna be something that's given away. We're also upcoming events, supporting Art Walk with promotion and information for visitors. And then we've got the Christmas Parade and Christmas Open House still. So we've got lots of things happening. And we look forward to having everyone come participate. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Heather, this is Ramon. On average, how many walk-in visitors are you getting per day, for example? And is the visitor's center now being manned, what, seven days a week or just five days a week?
It's five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday. And the flow is very different depending on the day and obviously the weekend. If there's, like, if it's a holiday weekend, then there's a lot more people coming through. But today, for example, I've had over twenty people in here, and Tuesday's usually a slower day. Saturdays are actually probably like the second busiest day. It's Friday when I get the most visitors. So it just depends on the day of the week. But we're averaging the, so for September, the average was about sixty-five people a week. And we're already seeing that go up for October. More and more people are traveling. And that's reflected in the hotel numbers and the short-term rentals, too.
Aside from yourself, who else is helping you out at the visitor's center?
I'm the only hourly employee that works at the visitor's center. I, Chris and I work together. I work with Chris on all the promotion stuff and the website that, that obviously he's created and I write content for him. But I get, I'm lucky that I get a lot of support from other city departments.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When the Halloween event is, is that on Halloween?
It is. It's gonna be from three to six on Halloween, Saturday the thirty-first at Coconut Park.
It's not on visitalpine texas dot com, which is why I tend to go for things. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay.
Three to six?
Three to six.
Yep, great.
And what time is the visitor's center open?
We're open from nine to four. Most of the time, I'm, I'm here a little later, but those are the hours of operation.
Yeah, I see there's some scary movies going on at Coconut as well for Halloween.
Yes, the theater department, they're putting those on as a drive-in.
All right. Thank you, Heather. We got Chris. Get your... Geo, did we get Chris off mute?
Yes, he's already off mute.
Okay. Chris, are you there? There you are, Chris. We can't hear you. No.
Go.
No. Hey, Heather, did you want to, did you want to go through Chris's slides and see if he can maybe log off, log back on? I can go through either one.
I actually, my screen is black right now. I can't see anything.
Oh, okay. All right, can everybody see us here in Civic Center fine? The screen share?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll review for Chris. You know, we've got, you know, he shared quite a bit of data in the packet relative to his activities and what we're seeing from a, from a flow perspective on the advertising. He's looking heavily at the state level, what's happening at the state. He and I met with Justin from the Texas Hotel Lodging Association this week as well. And I think what we're seeing is the smaller, more rural-type communities, especially in West Texas, are gathering more, more travel because people just feel like it's safer coming out here. Certainly, hotel occupancy from a state level is a little down. But I think we're really popping back up here.
How about now?
Okay.
Hey!
There you go, Chris. I, I hope I did you justice on the first slide.
Hello, Chris.
Are you still there?
Okay, can y'all hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, Chris, you there? All right.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Keep going. Chris, we can hear you. All right, he's, he's probably got a couple. So, you know, some of the other work that Chris has been doing is, is a lot of the branding around the lodging and the safety as well as the COVID testing. And really, we've tried to give him the latitude because he's very talented in pulling these pieces together. And, you know, we, he's working, you know, once again collaboratively with the rest of the team on doing things in both English and Spanish, too, where it makes sense. The photo contest, you know, lots of photos entered this year, fifty percent over our average drove website traffic up. Certainly, good prizes offered this year. I was kind of hoping to see if maybe he had an announcement today on who was the winner. I hope everybody got to submit some photos. I did myself. But more to come on that from Chris. And then this particular piece here really speaks to some of the other work that's happening as we're bringing in these travel writers. And really speaking to Far West Texas, the majesty out here what, you know, the capacities are. We're getting lots of good pieces in some of the state-level magazines. As Heather identified earlier, we do have a tremendous amount of our traffic that comes from within the state. Possible changes with the hotel occupancy tax law. Certainly, we've got the resolution in support of the parks improvement. One of the pieces that Chris and I discussed with Justin on that was really not reducing our ad spend over our thirty-six-month average. And that, that is where Texas Hotel Lodging Association came to in relation to their discussions with Fredericksburg. So I think they're gonna really be behind that. And also the annotation that parks being tied to tourism. So those of you that have traveled to Fredericksburg know they've got that one main park, the center of town, that draws a lot of their, their tourist travel to events there. So ideas like that. The, the other piece was that rescission of the law specific to Alpine on the requirements of spend, that fifty percent ad requirement. You know, I, I think there's always a question on, do we want to rescind that and move forward? I think when you have a change in the law that allows for something like parks improvement, that itself will change those requirements for Alpine. So as we discussed with Justin, that, that will take its course through that. I'm one personally who thinks that the advertising is, is very important, as long as it's, it's well-directed at the, at the right places. But we've also demonstrated that we've got ample dollars for events and sponsoring of those, too, which, which are important to bring tourists in. So, Chris, sorry you were having some audio. I hope I did you justice. Those of you who have a chance to go to Midweek Mercantile tomorrow, he's gonna be leading a group with the Swifts and other local artists. They'll be in a big circle out in the front doing some play-alongs. So should be exciting. And thank you, Chris. All right, Adelina.
Good evening. I'm gonna do the environmental services update. Next slide, please.
There you go.
Okay. So I'm gonna be speaking about the City of Alpine Water Conservation Studies. The recycling center stats, tree grants the city has applied, applied for in the proposed green space north of City Hall. Next slide. So the City of Alpine Water Conservation Strategies were presented to council back in January twenty-first. And they were submitted to the Far West Texas Planning Group. And the draft was approved January ninth, that, which included both strategies. Then the Far West Texas group submitted the plan to the Texas Water Development Board back in March. So our, the regional plan, including our strategies, will be in the state water plan, and it's gonna come out in 2022. Because we're in the, in the regional plan and in the state plan, we're now eligible to ask for funding to implement this water strategy, strategies. Right now, we're working with our engineering firm to get a final cost assessment for the second strategy, the reuse of effluent. I'm working on that hopefully before the end of the year. So we're ready for the application in March twenty twenty for, twenty-one. Next slide, please. So I'd just like to brush up on the water conservation strategies. The following strategies are intended to utilize all the water available, that would be rainwater or runoff and the treated effluent. The goal is to restore grassland and repairing restoration in the project area, which is the Coconut Park area. This would improve wildlife, increase biodiversity, and increase outdoor recreation. This, these projects were, will also be integrated with the Parks Master Plan Trail Project, which would include, include, increase tourism by expanding the trail system in the area. This would include signage with historical information, trail information, and wildlife information. Also, these projects, if implemented, could be used as outdoor education for, for everybody, for the university, for the high school, the grade schools, and other local schools. Also, the second point would be to develop a water source that is available to recharge the aquifer. The third goal would be to diminish the amount of treated water we currently use for irrigation. And the fourth would be to provide efficient landscaping irrigation on the rain gardens. So strategy one, just like a brush, it's irrigation application of captured rainwater runoff. It, it would be two rain gardens, nodes of coconut, and in between the pool and the, and the base, in Bado fields. And the strategy number two would be modifications to the wastewater treatment plant and the irrigation system. Next slide, please. Oh.
This is right here.
Sorry.
It's okay. When you talk about to diminish the amount of treated groundwater that is currently used for landscape irrigation, is that the effluent water that is coming out now, or do I don't understand that?
No, it's just the, the groundwater that they use for watering the park or the golf course or in that area. Like, yeah, just what they're using for drinking water, potable water.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions on the previous slide? Any other questions on the previous slide? Nope. Okay. Moving on next to the recycling numbers, this first slide is just the visitors to the center and the total for Alpine residents and others, and then the average monthly. Next slide, please. This is the total drop offs for each material. Also, all staffing positions have been filled since July 26, 2020. Currently, we are collecting electronics from residents. We have up to like eight pallets, four complete, and we're still collecting every Tuesday and Thursday from nine to 11:30. And will continue through October and if needed, we might spill till November until we collect like 22 or 23 that fit in semi container. Crowley Pickup started October 12. We went back to our ordinance and we have just a couple of issues, but it was like a pilot program. We're working on little details for next year's schedules, dates and maybe make it more accessible for residents. The city applied for a couple of tree grants and we got trees for a giveaway currently planned for November 2nd to the 7th. And also I'm working on keep up on beautiful fall sweep community cleanup, tentative date for November 14th this year.
Adelina?
Yes, sir.
Got a question on, you said on the trees, what type of trees are they?
Oh, my next point will be detail on each application. If you mind, it's a bunch of native trees.
Okay.
Yes, sir. On this slide, this is the numbers from, that I get from TDS. So their year starts in September 1st, so the date is up to the end of August. This is the totals of tons the landfill received and the pie charts show how much left we had on CND and municipal solid waste and tons. Next slide, please. This is also with TDS. What they collected, the first slide is plastic and tin, and then the second graph is aluminum and mixed paper. Next slide, please. The first graph is cardboard and scrap metal and the second graph is brush. Next slide, please. And total recycle through the year was 558 US tons. Okay, so the city applied for four grants with the Apache Tree Grant. All four were awarded and we applied for four projects. The first project is the Coconut Park Area Rain Gardens. We got 50 trees. The first box shows all the trees we apply for or requested. The second project was the Green Space at City Hall. We got 50 trees as well and those were the trees we requested. And for the tree giveaway, we requested 250 trees. And we asked for less native trees, but we're going to have 250 of the ones on the bottom box. Next slide, please. We also applied for trees for Pueblo Nuevo Park. We got 50 trees, but we won't receive those trees till next spring due to projects, construction in that park so that we will be ready next year. In total, we received 400 native trees from the Apache Tree Grant. And Mayor, if you need to, I can send you that Excel spreadsheet if you need to know exactly the trees we requested.
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, and next is the proposed green space north of City Hall. We are planning on doing a water catchment on the north sloping roofs of City Hall in the Civic Center, which this water we would use to water the trees and any vegetation in that area. We're thinking of doing an esplanade walkway that it would be really pretty for when we have events and and it would be a nice kind of picnic area too. And the green space is north of there. So we are working with our parks, with our streets department, with Eddie. And we're going to see how we can arrange those 50 trees we got for that place. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
I think what you're talking about outside City Hall is great. My only question is, we do have events like parades and things like that that tend to use that space. You're talking about the Green Space or the Esplanade. What's the strategy in thinking about that relative to when parades and things like that from a lineup standpoint?
I think that clear area on the west side, I don't know if that's, I think that's going to be also parking for City Hall. I think it's almost the same size. Well, not technically, but it looks similar size. I don't know if that could be a spot to line up.
So what Eddie's talked about doing has been to expand where we took our paving where we finished it on the north end and go north about another 40 feet. That esplande area, we would plant some trees within there in that blue area, but then really move paving up to where the green box starts and then also pave over where the post office is, where we left that as dirt. And so then if we had a large event like a parade or something, we could actually close down 12th Street for staging and then wrap it all around and come around to the front. So that would be how Chief and I would manage the traffic through there. And then really, the only resident that gets impacted is on that northeast corner, but we can work around that and they're pretty nice people.
So the only other question I have, Adelina, by the way, great job with your presentation. When it comes to the tree giveaway of November 2nd through 7th, what's the limit of the number of trees you'll allow individuals to ask for?
In the flyer that I'm working on is one, two, two per person. But since it's going to be a span of a week, I was thinking of doing it one Saturday, but if we do it in the span of the week, we can gauge how popular the event is. And if really we don't get a lot of people, we can start giving larger quantities if needed. Some of those trees we're also going to use in other places that were not in the project, but they're going to be given out to maybe the departments. Yes, sir.
Great job, Adelina.
Thank you.
That's it?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearings then. City manager.
Yeah, the first one is a public hearing on citizens' views and comments concerning the approved, proposed changes of Chapter 10, the animals, section 10-186 Dangerous Dogs.
Hey, do we have anybody on cue?
No, we didn't receive any public comment requests.
All right, then let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. The minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All lines will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in a normal sequence. After the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City manager.
Mayor, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first one is the approval of minutes from city council meeting on October 6, 2020. And the second is discussed, considered, and I'm sorry, it's take action on Resolution 2020-10-19 Resolution for the use of the Big Bend Telephone Conference Room to be the location for the November 3rd, 2020 city council meeting.
So Mr. Mayor, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Betty. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and we'll vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
So you have Council Stevens and Council Escovedo are voting yes, Mayor.
Okay, then we have a majority vote. All those oppose, none, so the motion carries. Thank you all very much. And now we'll move to the information or discussion items and we'll start with Mr. Zimmer.
All right, this evening we've got discussion on the Enterprise Zone for Big Bend Regional Medical Center with their CEO, Rick Flores. He's got some folks here from their team as well. And I will, if Gio pulls them off mute, I will share the screen again for their presentation. Gio, do you know who all those folks are? I believe it's McKenzie, Eric, Rick, Flores.
I've already requested most of them to record.
So Flores, you're on.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Zimmer, truly appreciate it. First and foremost, thank you for allowing us to present an opportunity where both BBRMC, the city of Alpine can capitalize on a safe project. Tonight, I will provide a synopsis of what the project is and why the project is important. I will be followed by my colleagues, Mr. Eric Weatherford and Ms. McKenzie Wortley, attorneys from the Hush Blackwell Law Firm. They will provide a little bit more refined explanation. Tonight, the business we bring before you is the Texas Enterprise Zone project. Is well known for a collaborative approach between communities, businesses and the state to enhance jobs for the community by investing or reinvesting monies into a business in the community. We believe the investments BBRMC is willing to make will sustain the viability of the hospital and its services for years to come. We all know the impact of the current environment in the United States and more importantly, the state of Texas. With more and more individuals or families forfeiting their healthcare insurance plans due to the record breaking unemployment rates throughout, the burden eventually falls on healthcare and hospitals. So we, Big Bend Regional Medical Center, are seeking a nomination from the city of Alpine for the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Thank you guys. And what we're going to do now is Mr. Weatherford and Ms. Wortley will provide a more in-depth explanation of the project, excuse me. And then we can address any questions if there's any. I'm sure we'll have a couple. And I also want to thank Mr. Stevens and Mr. Zimmer for the time they gave me to discuss this previously. Great questions, great education by Mr. Stevens. Eric, again, thank you very much. So I'm just going to turn this over to Eric Weatherford and McKenzie. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, City Council and Eric for working with us today and over the last couple of weeks and months to present this to you. As Rick said, we are attorneys with the firm Hush Blackwell and we work with hospitals generally in various kinds of healthcare matters, but in particular, we've been working a lot on Texas Enterprise Zone projects. And really, it's kind of an odd deal and until a couple of years ago, it was not something we really knew much about. But we got into it and all of a sudden, we've been working with a bunch of hospitals and having a lot of success getting getting the governor's office to grant our hospitals tax relief under these programs. So it's exciting and allows hospitals to be able to expand their capital commitments in the community while also getting sales and use tax refunds. So I'm going to turn it over to McKenzie. She's going to talk a little bit about the program generally. I'm going to talk a little bit about the application process. And then, as Rick said, you can fire away questions at me, at Rick, at McKenzie and we'll just kind of be a kind of open forum for you as long as you want to circumstand us. So McKenzie?
Yeah, next slide, please. Oh, one more. Thank you. Okay, so I'll just start by discussing an overview of the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. So it is a sales and use tax refund program which is designed to encourage private investment and job creation in certain areas of the state of Texas. It allows local communities to partner with the state to promote that investment in the community. And as Rick discussed, it's sort of a public-private partnership by which the company, which is the applicant that is located in the community for its part, invests in capital and creates and retains jobs while the community for its part provides support to the company and furtherance of the project. And then approved projects by the state are eligible to apply for sales and use tax refunds on qualified expenditures. Next slide. Eligibility for the program, a local community must nominate the project for it to be eligible. Communities are encouraged to provide local incentives to the project for qualification. Eric will discuss the incentives a little bit more later, but I will quickly just name a few that are in the application to give you guys an idea. These may include tax incentives, zoning changes, increased fire or police protection, crime prevention programs, job training. There's a lot of incentives that are available in the application. Communities may nominate projects for a designation period of up to five years during those years of which the project and the company can receive sales and use tax refunds on those expenditures. Projects may be physically located in or outside of a designated enterprise zone. In this case, Big Bend Regional Medical Center is outside of an enterprise zone. So as such, they will commit in their application that at least 35% of their new employees during the designation period will meet one of three criteria, which are their new employees will be economically disadvantaged. They will be residents of the enterprise zone or they will be veterans. And Eric will start with the application process on the next slide.
Sure. So the application process may seem a little bit counterintuitive that the the city is the one that applies for tax refunds for the business. But that's just what the government gave us. That's the way the statute reads. And so really, it's a true public-private partnership under which the city and the local business can work together to obtain these, to obtain these tax refunds. So the city works with the business to submit this application. It's done on a quarterly basis. Right now, the most, the current application due date or the soonest we can apply is December 1st. And then it's quarterly after that. So it would be March 1st and then June 1st and September 1st. So at any given time, a rural area can have six enterprise zone projects designated at any given time. What happens every quarter when people apply is the state gets all these applications and they look at them and they get about, I think on average, about 20 to 30 applications. And they score them based on various various criteria. And they have a point system even. And the ones that have the highest point totals have a better chance of getting designation. I think also they do look at geographic characteristics and, you know, they may have I think also, they do look at geographic characteristics, and, you know, they may have 10 from, say, the City of Dallas. They're probably not going to give all of them from one geographic area. So the, the Governor's Office, which is the office that administers the awarding of these, these refunds, looks at these things every quarter. They sometimes will come back with questions, and they, they look at the points, they look at the projects, and ultimately, they make a decision. One of the things, as McKenzie mentioned, is just considering offering incentives, not even actually offering them, is something that generates points for a, for an application. But moving on to the next one, I'm going to walk you through kind of the process, because there is a process. Can we back up one? Sorry. Oh, wait. No, I'm sorry. Next one. Okay, there you go. So the process is, is pretty simple in the sense that it's going to be consistent with the way you would do business anyway. You have to have a public hearing. You've got to have the notice of the hearing to approve these programs. You have to have a nominating ordinance. Now, that may seem sort of overly complicated. You may want to just do a resolution, or you may ask me, dude, why do we have to do an ordinance? Well, that's what the statute says. If you've already got an enterprise zone project that's nominated, then you don't actually need the ordinance. If you don't, you, you have to have an ordinance. So that's, that's sort of the rub here, is we have to go through the ordinance process. And as we understand, it takes three meetings to get that done. If we're wrong about that, you know, I'm, I'm not, certainly not a local government expert. I'm going to let your city attorney tell you guys that. But that's, that's sort of the process. We have shared a draft ordinance with your, with your city manager, and hopefully, your, your city attorney will have a chance to take a look at that. So I know, looking and hearing local incentives and agreements sounds kind of daunting, because you're probably saying, hey, we're not sitting on stacks of cash right now to offer a bunch of incentives. We get that. You know, if you're interested in granting some incentives, then great. We can, we can enter into an agreement to do some of the various incentives that McKenzie talked about, and that are listed in the application. But just in the ordinance, we can put that you may provide incentives, not shall provide, and the state gives points for that. They give more if you say you're going to, but they give basically half credit if you say you may. So that's, that's something worth considering. But we get no credit if we don't list even may. We do have a lot of detail that is in the, in the application. We're going to fill out almost all of it, because a lot of it is corporate information and information about what we're going to do in this project. There is a little bit of information we're going to need from the city, and we'll work with Mr. Zimmer on that, but it'll have to do with some of the business and revitalization that's been doing, going on in the city. And we know how to, to work with him and your folks to pull together the right information and, and put it in the application in a way that we think will be successful. And really, the same thing with respect to any of the information in here that is your responsibility as a city. We're going to try to make it as user-friendly as possible. We want you to effectively just have to put your name on it and not have to do a whole lot of work besides have your city attorney and your city manager make sure they're happy with it. And of course, y'all approve it. Next slide. Now, this next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about, but it lays out simply the project. And these are the cool things that, that Rick is planning to do. And you can see him here. I'm not going to read these things. You guys can read. But they're, they're putting substantial investment into the hospital. And these things are going to cost the hospital a significant amount of money. So by investing in their building, they are going to be entitled, if they can get this granted, to some sales and use tax refunds. And it's really going to generate some additional jobs also. You can go to the next slide as well. And they're going to generate an additional nine full-time jobs, and they're going to retain the jobs that they have. So it's an exciting deal. I'm going to shut up and let Rick talk a little bit more about it, and then you can pepper us with all the questions you want. Rick, do you want to talk anything about the project itself?
Absolutely. As, as Eric has shared, and thank you, Eric, and thank you, McKenzie. We have a variety of things that we're looking at in investing. Actually, they've been part of the strategic plan. What we're doing now is, in addition to looking at every year and putting together our strat plan, we're looking at a five-year adventure, journey, whatever you want to call it. Because you all know the importance of this hospital in this community, actually, the region. We have a tri-county area that people don't really understand how large the community is. With this Enterprise Zone Project, one of the biggest things we're looking at is a, a return on our investment. Very, it's simply put, it's a ROI. And that ROI has potential to pay for one key component I'm really looking at, and that's mammography suite. And Eric had asked if we had done some feasibility studies or any kind of study to determine if that's appropriate. And, and let me share with you. One of the biggest things we did was we did a formal process. You know, it's used, it's a standard study. But the most important community or discussion that took place was with our providers in this region. You know, down to Presidio, discussion with our local groups, you know, PCHS, you know, Dr. Billings and his group over there are physicians. One of the biggest things we've identified is our mammography needs. We had done the total count, and we were approximately at 100 patients driving out to Midland, Odessa, El Paso, trying to get a mammography study. And unfortunately, our group out of El Paso Desert Imaging, due to funding, grants, what have you, have halted providing services down here. Now, you know, it's a significant component. But, but the biggest concern is not just capturing volumes and revenue and providing easier access for the, the members of the community. But the biggest challenge is if its accessibility is limited. People tend to avoid the study entirely. So, you know, you know, we're, we're, that's, that's, that's part of the reason of the investment or reinvestment back into the community, because we hope to be here for a little bit. I hope you guys let me stick around for a little while. So we want to invest. We feel comfortable investing in new product, reinvesting in the actual infrastructure. I have sat with Ditch Kano and got his intake on this. And these are things that we've been looking at, and Quorum and Big Bend Regional tend to be here for a little while. But that's all I got. We're hoping to get some support from the city. You guys have supported this institution before, ever since I've got here. So I know we'll all make good, educated decisions. And really, I'm open to any questions unless Eric or McKenzie have some additional components of the slide. And I think that's it, isn't it? Yeah.
Yes, it's time for you guys to cross-examine this.
And Rick, Rick Stevens here, the sports medicine facility. I get the mammography, the horoscope, digital, I mean, the gynecologic. The sports medicine facility, what's that all about? And what would that add? Does it exist today? Because we have lots of sports rehab. Is this a potential surgeries and things like that? Or a duplicative process of what exists already?
I love that question. Okay, so, you know, we really haven't finalized the, the jargon that we want to use. Can we maximize the screen here? I can't see Mr. Stevens. One of the things we want to do is, is identify the proper language to call this, this, this sports facility. In reality, in part of the strategic plan, it's, it's, it's performance enhancement. And I forget the other language that our rehab director has called it. But our challenge right now is, we managed to bring an orthopod or an orthopedic surgeon in from El Paso, and he's been very successful. And his name's Dr. Dan Vandal, and we brought him in from El Paso about a year and a half ago when I was, I got here. And it's been very successful. But part of that is because it's a big process. In addition to getting the surgery, you have to have wonderful follow-up. So in, in conjunction with the surgery, rehab has, has gone through the roof. Even with COVID, COVID's limited participation, because some people are, yes, they're afraid to come to the hospital, because, and this is a national challenge, people are afraid to come to the hospital because of the COVID concerns. But what's taking place, Rick, is if you've been to our rehab facility, it's just a little bit bigger than a closet. And now what we're seeing is, you know, Salt Ross basketball players have come in, and I, you know, my rehab director has called me down. So Missy McBride will call me. So I'll run down to, down to the rehab area. And these, these kids, you know, like have about four inches away from top. So we can't really provide the best rehabilitation possible. We're starting to get, well, actually, we started to receive a lot of the kids from the Alpine Independent School District, you know, the Salt Ross Program. And we're getting, people come down from Fort Stockton. So the business component is very simple. We need a bigger space, because we cannot accommodate the volumes that we're getting. We're having to put guests out weeks, months, et cetera, to try and accommodate. So it's, it's, is it a duplication of services? No. We have a variety of new things that are, will be implementing. And you, I think I heard you say, what else can we do with it? Well, it's a, it's a multi-stage process. The first one is just to get the building established and provide the therapies that need to take place and get some additional hardware. But as we grow, one of the things that we're trying to do big picture-wise is retain staff. So another stage is to make this a, a facility that allows the staff to release tension, utilize as an exercise facility. Stage three and four have goals to establish walkways for, for guests in the community can use our walkways for the staff to walk. So decompression is one of the biggest things that's needed right now. And there's plenty of documentation that says healthcare workers today in this environment of COVID, et cetera, need some decompression. And I, I'm sure you all could understand that and embrace that concept. But that's where we are right now. That chunk of change that we want expensive for the rehab facility also allows us to bring in our orthopedic surgeon in more. We're going to provide some space for him, so he can have on hands more often than not. Allows us to do a, which we call it a, we don't know if we're going to call it a black and blue clinic, and that's after athletes perform, you know, Friday afternoon, Thursday, you know, Friday night lights, what have you. They can come see our orthopedic surgeon or other providers the following day. We want to be able to provide that service as fast as possible. So that's.
Thank you, Rick. I guess one of the questions I would ask is whether or not folks like Doc Spoon and others have bought into this from a capacity standpoint or not?
I've got worked with Doc Spoon. He's got his own program over there across town. But what I do know is the orthopedic surgeons from Odessa, Midland, Odessa, who have historically worked with him, have approached our facility and asked what is in the future.
I, I, so I would just ask you, make sure you close that loop, because you need to add capacity and take capacity away from someone that's been around here for a long time. You're on the radio, Doc's out there all the time. And I just, just, it'd just be helpful to educate us on what that relationship is.
Mr. Stevens, I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
A little better. Yes.
Yes.
What I, what I, what I grabbed from this statement you just made is, what's my bottom line? What's my relationship with the, the competition across the road? I think they have sufficient amounts. I don't keep up with how much they're doing, and trust me, people are more than willing to share with us. But what I, I do know is, I can't meet the need that I have right now.
Well, I understand you can't meet your need, but in a community like Alpine, we really do want to work together. And all I'm raising is, because I know Doc does a lot of work on the radio side, I just say, balance that out to make sure we're not taking jobs away by adding the sports medicine facility there, because then it's a zero-sum game.
Oh, I, I, I agree. I think that's a good point, Mr. Stevens. Let me reevaluate, look at exactly what's taking place. And the last thing we want to do is cause harm. But, and I, I can embrace that concept. But what I have to address is how we're accommodating right now versus what we should be accommodating.
Well, I get it. I just look at the broader community.
Oh, I agree with you. And that's a point well taken, sir.
Mr. Flores?
Yes, sir.
This is Rob Potten.
Hey, Mr. Potten. I can't see you, sir.
The question's really for your lawyers, and they don't have to answer now, but they might be able to email me later. But if they could forward to me the sort of the minimal amount of incentives the city could give to this project to, to help to get the project funded without the city giving away the farm. So the city could evaluate it when it comes back up for approval when the ordinance comes through.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Potten. Eric, I'm sure you and McKenzie heard that.
I think so. You want us to send you the minimum number of points that it takes to, to get the, the project granted status?
Well, what I'm thinking about, you all should sort of give us a, an ask list, in other words, what you want.
Oh, I see.
But, but start off with the minimum things that you think we might be able to, the city might be able to afford to offer that would improve the chance of getting funded. The city, I'm sure, wants to support the budget. Some of the incentives that have been talked about, I'm not sure.
Yes, I can show you what we've done in the past, if that would be helpful.
To, to, to that point, Rod, I would not be in favor of the council voting with Shell to buy. I'm hoping to go with May, but I really want to see before anything moves beyond May, a whole business plan. We're talking about investment of $3 million, talking about nine jobs. I'm looking for what the return looks like. I'm just a young business guy. I've not seen any business data yet. And so I think that's going to be an important part of it. And so I think the $3 million I applaud left the center for making that investment. But, but I do think it's going to be important.
We will see this appear before it goes from May to July. The, the list of incentives that add points to education, and some of them would have very, very little impact on the city. Some of them good, you know, good, good, want to save stats.
No, I, I get that. Here's my worry, though. As soon as we create one enterprise zone, I can think of 10 businesses that will come back and ask.
And provide financial.
So this is, that's why I asked a question about balance. There's no question in my mind about the importance of what goes on from the mammography, from the fluoroscopy. There's no question in my mind about the importance of what goes on from the mammography, from the fluoroscope. All of those are just terrific things to go do. But I just want to make sure we're balancing what goes on because it would not surprise me if on another part of the city, someone would come back and say, well, you ran a lot. We'd like to get grand dollars as well. And as was pointed out to any of us, we're not exactly flush with cash. So I think it really behooves the city to understand what the business implications are. And do what we can to clearly support the enterprise a lot. But I'm in favor of OPM using other people's money, not ours.
It's a good philosophy, sir. And guys, I apologize, but the acoustics are challenging. And so I get bits and pieces in Mr. Weatherford, Ms. Wirtley. I don't know if you, I've heard everything, but maybe we can come back and communicate via email, telephone, what have you. And I apologize, I'm sure it's on our side.
Yeah, we've launched doing the hybrid meetings now, Rick. So everything in the future, you'll be able to attend in person if you'd like as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Are there any other questions? Obviously, this is the initiation of discussions. And I can embrace what Mr. Stevens' points are valid, absolutely. And what was that acronym, sir? OPM? I'm a fan of that. So if there's no other questions, I'm assuming that we'll come back for further discussion. Would that be fair?
Yep, perfect.
And Eric, Mackenzie, is there anything that we need done in addition to what we just did?
Nope. Eric, unless you have anything?
Not at this point. We would like to get on the next agenda if we can in the event that you guys are ready to move forward. It would be good to continue to move the conversation along. I know, Rick, you're anxious to get started with these projects. And we can only go retroactive 90 days. So to the extent we can kind of continue to keep the ball rolling, I think that's a good idea. But I will say, you know, to the extent any of you have any questions about this information, about the program, just don't hesitate to give us a call or shoot us an email. It's not meant to be tricky. It's, like I said, just, it's kind of free money out there that we want to go get. And it really does help the hospital to achieve some of these goals. And so to the extent that we can work with you all, that's great.
Guys, I want to thank you all. Eric and Mackenzie, Mayor, City Council, and Eric Zimmer, I really, and Rod, I really appreciate you all and everybody that's listening. I'm going to go ahead and jump off because it's way past my bedtime. So guys, thank you. Have a great evening. Stay out of trouble. Eric, Mackenzie, thank you. I'll see you all.
Thanks. Thank y'all.
Thanks.
Great, great. Got it. And our next meeting will probably be at the Big Ben Telephone Conference Room. So maybe the presentations, we could, there'd be a lot clearer than what it is right now. Anybody still there?
Yep, yep, everybody's here.
Okay, it sounded like everybody got real quiet then. Okay, so they're through with their presentation then. We'll go ahead and we'll move on to item number two. Discussion on meeting rules, procedures, chapter 23, City Valpine Code of Ordinances. And the reason I brought that up, it's mainly for housekeeping. For the longest time, I've always been told by a couple of council members and some of the staff that the mayor could not put an agenda item. And I had looked at the city charter till I was almost cross-eyed. And in there, it kept saying that I could. So I went and checked with, and the reason was they were saying, well, because of the former mayor and whatnot. So I contacted the former mayor and asked him, he says, no, it's still on the charter. And the mayor does have the right to put an item on the agenda. Okay? Also, one of the questions that I get asked every now and then is, when's the deadline for submitting items for the agenda? And in here, it states very clear, it's 5:00 PM, and the last day is Wednesday. Okay? There for a while, I know it kind of got off track. It was Thursday and then Wednesday and Thursday and then Wednesday. And I think we're back to Wednesday again. Is that not correct, City Secretary?
Yes, so that's, that's correct. Am I off mute? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you off mute.
Okay, yes, sir. It's always been at 5:00 on Wednesday prior to the week before the City Council. I had actually sent out a memo back in 2018 with all of like bullet points or like a cheat sheet to show of what needed to be turned in and at the times and dates that the deadline was in place.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're all on board on this, okay? And thank you very much for submitting that notice. And also, one of the other ones is the council and city attorney shall determine who may or may not attend an executive session. Okay, this all by the charter. And it's on 23, 23 dash 21 from item E, and it goes to item K. Just some housekeeping that I think I needed to get straightened out. And that's all I have on this item. So we can move on to the next one.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On item E, and I'll read the res, or the ordinance. It says the mayor, any council member or the city manager, manager may place item on any meeting agenda using the form adopted by resolution if possible. All resolutions or ordinances require sponsorship by council member or the city manager. So that clearly says that any action item requires sponsorship by a council or the city manager. And actually, Councillor Stevens wrote that language. You can tell because he is the only individual that drops the "i" in ordinances. It can be spelled either way, but he actually crafted that language. I don't know if Councillor Stevens want to state anything on that, but it was pretty clear.
Yeah, this discussion, my post came on council, more years ago than I recall. On my third term now, I came on you before that, so I'm like, oh, it'll be close to seven years. When the former mayor was in place, and we get a lot of ordinance work, and that's the ordinance that's in.
Okay, Rick, you're, we can barely hear you.
I will walk over. Can you hear me now, Mayor?
There you go, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, okay. If I'm standing next to the mic, the other one's not working very well.
Okay.
That ordinance was put together about six years ago. And council had agreed to that ordinance at the time, and it's been in place essentially ever since, other than some minor modifications to it. But council at the time said, hey, this is the policy that they wanted to put in place, and that's what stood, and that's worth following.
Okay. Because, you know, I've asked people and no one could give me an answer or show me where it occurred. And that happened prior to me becoming the mayor. So there's been some confusion on that.
Well, it's our ordinances, and I have to admit, I get a little bit frustrated. The ordinances are all available, they're out online. And I just think it's incumbent upon of all of us to make sure we understand what they say. And this is the form if we want to change them, then council can certainly change them.
Okay, then we'll go back and I'll find that ordinance in.
But it's in the package.
Yeah, it's in the package.
Okay.
59 of section two, what Kio sent out to us on Friday.
Okay, I'll read, I'll go over it again. Okay, got it. Okay. Let me just go over that again, get it squared away. Any more comments on that? Hello?
Comments on this?
No comments.
Okay. My screen just went blank over here. Give me a second to, I can find it again. Okay, here we go. Okay, then we can move on to item number three then, and that's going to be city manager.
Yeah, so the next item is a discussion on the output of the meeting between city attorney and city manager, police chief, building official animal control as requested by the city council at a previous council meeting. In your packet, I provided quite a bit of information relative to this particular agenda item, along with sub-tending documents. So I put together the write-up from that meeting on October. Judge, prosecutor, following Judge Stewart's presentation back on July 10th. And then an email that I shared Wednesday, August 5th, with city council, mayor, the judge, prosecutor, where I shared information from our Texas Municipal Court Education Center. And then also included the email from Friday, October 9th, 2020, to council, mayor, prosecutor, where I shared the primary case dispositions for the Alpine's report. Behind that information is a table that shows the history of closed cases going back to August of 2018. And then behind that is information depicting the high level of cases from September 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, on the cases that were dismissed for the following three reasons, motion of prosecution, compliance, code enforcement, and compliance. So really going through those particular items, the meeting itself on October 13th, where David, Robert, Jennifer, myself, and Rod attended. I put a detail accounting of what Rod had asked the question sequentially to David, Jennifer, and Chief Martin, go through their expectations for the municipal court. And then I listed the bullet points from David, Jennifer, and Chief Martin. Some of the primary items that came up. Most specifically was the use of, you know, the bench book, as well as how important that would be with the new municipal judge. Also, one of the items that David, and I'm just going through some of the bullet points I, like I said, provided this last week. You know, there are times that there's multiple tickets, but there are various citations that are specific to an individual. I think I talked about that to a certain degree in my report earlier. All of those items really need to be addressed when we do give various citations. You know, the other piece that was certainly very important that Jennifer talked about was timeliness. And we saw that again with the case that I had shared earlier today where we have a specific individual that's been doing the same behavior for well over a year. And her and her staff get frustrated if those aren't brought forward and treated in a timely manner. Also, the history of some of the individuals is important because we do have folks that are repeat offenders, and understanding that history is important. And then Chief Martin certainly talked about, as he has previous city council meetings, the decorum in municipal court. Also, following up, if there is a case that is dismissed or something that our administrative staff handled improperly, we want to know about that timely because we use those as training situations for our staff. You know, and there are training implications for staff, if anything is recommended for dismissed. So case preparation is very important. We talked about that in our meeting with Rod. Moving forward, as I said, I included the emails from July and from August because I thought it's good context relative to the length and the times and some of the communications that we've been sharing as a city. And then moving forward from there, info that Lorraine had pulled for us from earlier this month, the October 8th report, shared on the 9th. And he had looked at different cases that were dismissed, shared the email with council on some of those ones that had higher volume of dismissals. And then we took a look at those and went in more detail. So specifically, what were those cases? And that gives us some context of what Councillor Stevens actually pointed to earlier is we see specific types of cases, speeding, the animal of large, minors in possession of alcohol. And those are things that we also do get citizen complaints from. And we want to make sure that from an administrative perspective, that we're out there working on accountability within the community. And our officers, whether they're on the police team, code enforcement, or our animal patrol team, are working well with the citizens. But also, there are times that we have to write citations. And then when we do, it's certainly very important that we carry those citations through our municipal court, that we mitigate backlog in the court. And I think as we saw in that court that Lorraine had produced, that's in your packet as well, that I supplied earlier, was where our case counts are now, certainly worth of 1,600 on this case load. So it's going to be important that we get a municipal judge nominated and approved so that we can start working through these cases.
I've got two, Eric Gilbert Valensfella, who used to be the JP. And then there was an application, I think you got a copy of it, Ms. Elizabeth Lewis, who is an attorney. And I reached out to Ms. Lewis on, with an email, and I haven't heard a response from her. Gilbert said he's considering it also.
Okay, there was a Virginia Harvey.
Okay, I didn't see, didn't see hers.
Okay. That was, you know, like I said, a lot of information in the packet. Any questions relative to the content?
You broke up.
Mayor, I'm going to just bellow up. Can you hear me now?
I can barely hear.
Can you hear me now?
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, so I must admit, when Eric asked me to bring my mic, I brought the wrong mic. So next time, I'll bring the correct mic. And so we'll be able to hear in this room because I've got a mic that will pick up across the whole conference room. And I already bought one for the city, so.
But we'll be at Big Ben.
Well, this is not going to be the last time we have it in this room.
Right.
So anyway, my apologies.
Well, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, so I think the real question is, Rod, was it a good discussion from your standpoint?
Very good.
Okay, great, which is for me, what the objection is, no. And one of the things important is from us, from council, transparency and accountability is important. I just want to reiterate, you know, some of the numbers, and Eric, can I ask that maybe we published this information about the number of the 1,625 open cases, maybe the top hitters?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be great, but just to help everyone recognize, because we council take hits all the time. And the fact is, again, animal at large, pending cases, 169 pending cases there. Failure to appear, that means people have basically said they put their thumb out in front of their patients, says, I'm not gonna show up in this court. 151, and that's out of 1,625, so that's almost 10% of people said, I don't care, I'm not showing up. Driving under the influence, 53. Expired licenses, 61. Failure to maintain insurance, 53. And this is out of the 1,625. As I mentioned earlier, consumption of alcohol by minors, 80. Driving without a license, 65. Let's see, another one here, public intoxication. 87, my slide's going for this kind of small stuff, it's speeding tickets, 175. It's just, I think it's important, we've got people out writing citations, we now need some work in municipal court.
Okay. Theo, there's someone on the screen, are they gonna speak or what?
By someone, you mean?
Somebody just popped up.
No.
Okay. Well, hopefully I can get, I can nominate a municipal judge by November meeting. Because yes, you know, we got a backlog of them, we need to move forward with this. So I'll reach out again to the three individuals to see where they're at. Eric, do you have any more?
No, that's it.
That's it? Okay. And let's move on to item number nine, action items to be accommodated by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to up to 10 per meeting after being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp. Citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in our own business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak at this time available. Item one, city manager.
Yeah, item number one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on approving resolution 2020-10-02 to allow for the expenditure of municipal hot revenue by the city for construction or improvements of municipal parks.
So Mr. Mayor, I propose that city council approve resolution 2020-10-02 to allow for the expenditure of municipal hot funds by the city for construction or improvements of or in our municipal parks. That was a second by Lucy.
Okay, second by Lucy. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, this is the item we had spoke of last meeting. And the resolution would just be in support of the initiative that Fredericksburg is working back. It doesn't codify it in the law, that is, Council Stevens, probably take a couple legislative sessions.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose?
Yeah, both Rick and Lucy raised their hand.
Okay, very good, I saw one hand, the side of the screen, okay, and all those opposed? Motion carries, thank you all very much. Okay, item two, Ms. Curry.
Um, can I just start with making the motion?
You have to read it all, please.
She can make the motion.
So I'd like to make the motion that we discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading on the approved, proposed changes of chapter 10, Animal Section 10-186 Dangerous Dogs.
Okay, is there a second?
Lucy's second.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote on it, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
You have five, yes, it's fair.
Okay, very good, okay, so motion passes. Let's go to item number three, Ramon Olivas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmen, I move that we collectively could discuss and hopefully take appropriate proactive action regarding the future installation of nightlights and other improvements at facilities at Lujan Baseball Field, which is within Centennial Park, located at South 11th Street and West 11th High in Ward 2.
Okay, is there a second?
Lucy's seconded.
Okay, Lucy seconded, okay. Any discussion?
If, Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether this, I had a slide program to show on the screen, but whether it was, can be brought up or not, I'm not sure. Is that available, Eric?
Yep, I can bring that up right now.
Okay, I can't see anything on my screen except what's on the Civic Center screen. There you go.
Okay, got it.
Okay, getting an inquiry from a resident of Ward 2, after consultation with a couple of other folks, regarding the Valentin Lujan Baseball Field. And next slide, and his, next slide. And then of course, Lujan Baseball Field is part of the Centennial School Park complex. I guess who are the Panthers from 1926 to 1972? But the Centennial School Park was dedicated on January 5th, 98, 1998, next slide. The, the facilities and services at Lujan Field are okay, but they can be improved. One looks at the benches that are there right now, and I've had a chance to go out and and actually enjoy some of the baseball games there, and those benches are sturdy, but they're unsafe. They have no side railings or back railing to keep people from falling off. And for older residents, they're a little hard to sit on, to be honest with you. The, also the dugouts for the players are in fairly good shape, but can also be improved. Next slide. And on the other side of the court, they have basically the same benches, and you have a parking area on both sides for people to view the game from their vehicles. But interesting enough, there are trees and other vegetation that basically covers their field of vision. And in the middle, you find a water fountain, which is basically just a lead pipe with a spigot at the end that people drink water from. That could also be, as far as I'm concerned, improved. Next slide. When I went out to take some photographs, I just happened luckily to run into a group of, I guess, Pee Wee Leaguers that are getting ready, were getting ready to practice. And you could tell by the excitement that they were really getting, were interested. And I heard from the people that this is the baseball field that's open to all residents in Alpine for games or practice, but it's also an area that can also be used for soccer games and even touch football games. Next slide. And with a little bit of improvement, the baseball field would certainly benefit as the days get earlier, or night comes on earlier during the day, with nightlights for safety and security. But also keeping in mind those bleachers, a waterfront, landscaping backdrop, and safer dugouts for the players. And it is, I understand that in the past, there was action taken, and monies were actually set aside. The amount of money set aside for the nightlights and the improvements, it's not exactly clear. I've heard between 25,000 and 70,000. And of course, if we could somehow be creative and try to get closer to 70,000, that would certainly help to improve the facilities at this baseball field. And I believe Mary Ann Lujan is in the audience now at the Civic Center. And if Mary Ann would you like to have, make a comment or two?
I'm gonna step all the way up here to the mic. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me here. As Councilman Oliva stated, I'm Mary Ann Lujan. And I'm here to share some words and thoughts about the Lujan Field, located on West Avenue Y and 11th Street. As of right now, the only main public field that the majority of the community utilizes is a coconut field. Or the Little League fields located at the coconut. With the ideas and improvements that Councilman Oliva has shared with you all, I believe that it would greatly promote usage of the field for anybody in our community. I'm willing to, you know, volunteer and get other people, I've heard it out in the streets, I've been out to the field, and I've talked to several of the parents of kids practicing there. And they're willing to donate some of their time to improve this field for their practices and games, whatever it's gonna be used for. Thank you for your time and having me this evening, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Lujan.
Any questions? Any questions?
Aside from that, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, apparently at some past city council decision was made that $25,000 would be set aside either from a general fund to be used for the installation of lighting. Now, this was way before, of course, my time as city councilman, back around 2015, 2016. But we have no idea what happened to the funding if it wasn't used. Does anybody out there, Cynthia, you were around at that time, do you know anything about that?
Ramon, this is Rick, I can tell you, there was a discussion brought forward, but there was no money allocated because there was a big discussion about compliance with the lighting ordinance. And as a result, there was no money allocated towards lights.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilor Oliva, I too will chime in on that. We did talk to, about the lighting, but like Councilor Stevens says, it did not comply with the ordinance. And we actually did a survey and sent out letters to all of the surrounding neighbors, and probably a little over 40, 45% of the people did not want lighting in that field because it was going to come in through their windows and doors around the neighborhood. But there was never any money allocated for that, it was just a discussion. And when the survey went out, it didn't move forward after that.
Yeah, actually Angie Bermuda was on council at the time, she was the one that sponsored the discussion. And the challenge was really around the adherence to the existing lighting ordinance. When we had the lighting workshop a couple weeks ago, one of the interesting things I know that I learned is that the dispersion of the light is a four to one ratio even when it's pointed down. So if you have the proper down on the light, but it's 75 feet up, it's still gonna go out 300 feet. And I know that was on people that were concerned several years back. That was their biggest concern, is that it would light up the yards, those within, you know, 3, 400 feet.
So at this time, from what I'm hearing, since there is no history of monies allocations for this activity, what would be the prospect of maybe the use of hot funds in the future and/or maybe a line item at the next fiscal year budget to include the improvements to the park?
Yeah, so I made a note to go back and look at what the Parks Master Plan called out relative to the improvements at that park, it'd be interesting to go back and look at that. I know our focus is here was really the drive towards allocations for Pueblo Nuevo. And, you know, certainly, you know, we can go back and look at the Parks Master Plan, and then, you know, in the future budgets, council can contemplate how many dollars to allocate based on what's available.
Okay, so I guess we can say that at this time, we can table this action item until further discussion and research is done to find out whether we can have a future allocation, whether from hot funds or budget for the improvements at Lujan Park, is that correct?
Ramon, this is Rick, relative to hot funds, that's not gonna be an opportunity until the state legislature would approve that, I think that's two or three years out, given the legislative process. So hot funds, I don't think is an option for us because we can't legally do it unless that law passes. My perspective on this is that ball field's an important ball field over there because it's really, I think, Centennial Park, the number of times it gets used for league's is big. What I think I've heard is there's a lot of people wanting to go spend some time to go work it, and there's probably a lot that can be done without a whole lot of dollars. If you take the lights out of the equation, and you're talking about, you know, a drinking fountain, which is fairly easy to do, and probably some elbow grease on some benches, and maybe some trimming on the partisan volunteers, my sense is probably a couple thousand dollars would go a long ways. And I'm sure, at least I would be willing to say, we ought to be able to go find a few thousand dollars out of the budget. But if taking the lights out of that reduces that big number in a big way. And I would be inclined to say, given you're providing the leadership on this, maybe come back to council next meeting with a pared-down number. It's, I'm encouraged by the community wanting to do the work associated with it. We ought to be able to put a few thousand dollars behind it to go work it in a way that makes sense.
I would say that's a general good path to follow, and if we can come up with some strategic plan at the local level to maybe conjure up a budget between two and five would be great.
Yeah, so that's my inclination, that's where I'd go. So my recommendation would be table until next meeting, and you come back with a little bit more, hey, here's what we think we can go do. And I would be surprised if council did not agree.
And Ramon and Eric, gentlemen, here.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is Mike Lindros, and I'm a resident nearby Alpine, I guess, or technically an extraterritorial jurisdiction. Anyway. Anyway, I am speaking in support of the lights and the park because it really is something that's needed for, I think, the area, I think it'll be growth, I'm not sure how tightly that's woven, how you find in this plant, Euro dark skies, how we can manage some of the fields we have. I think both sides, uh, of Alpine need work. Uh, and I think, I think the, the roads, for example, have been very excellent, I'm, I'm pleased with what I see there. Quite frankly, when I saw the hot discussion on the, uh, on the agenda, I thought it was perhaps in part for this, because quite frankly, if any of you are familiar with traveling league baseball and the amount of money those people spend, yeah, and, and the possibility of perhaps using this for a traveling league, all of a sudden, once or twice a year, and I'm sorry, that's not gonna be a lot of disruption to the neighbors. If you think about twelve teams, let's say ten or twelve teams coming into town and they will travel, they'll come here from San Antonio, they'll come here from El Paso, they'll come here from Chihuahua City to play ball. And I, I guess if a choice between coming here or going to Midland, I think, I think I didn't want to come here. Okay, and think of all those hotel rooms, and so now we're almost getting into more of a traditional hot one. So I'm, I'm sensing that the hot discussion was for generalized park use, okay? Say railroad park or something like that, where you can't really articulate a savings, but it generally brings in revenue. This, I'm pretty sure, if you can tie in lights once or twice a year and get a local organization to come with these, there are businesses that run these tournaments and come in here a couple of times a year, that's not gonna interfere significantly with, with the neighborhood folks. Uh, they will end up funding it, the lights and all of that stuff. And I think that would fall under probably traditional hot money, now I don't profess to be, to know all those kinds of things, but you can certainly point to hotel rooms and restaurant meals and, and those kinds of things that hot money, I, as I understand, is supposed to be used for. Uh, and perhaps even advertising in their brochure. Um, so I, I guess I would re-encourage, encourage looking at the light issue, looking at how, if it really is the people who would be opposed to that. Uh, keeping in mind that we really would need three or four fields with light, two or three, whatever, I mean, you can probably get there with another field to run some small tournaments. And I, I think it would make a lot of sense, I think it might generate some revenue. Obviously, the tourism side, they might, uh, they might even be a part of this, because again, we're bringing in people, and what's more, this is gonna be generally not alcohol driven. So a lot of the units we have are alcohol driven. And so here's a, a pleasant little thing, so I would encourage you to not be absolutely no lights focused, uh, but, but perhaps get creative while attending to the needs of the residents, certainly you don't want them affected, but look at Coconut and the people over in Carpenter, uh, they probably get lights those twelve nights if we can get ballgame going there. So again, Mike Lindros, I appreciate, I thank you for your time, uh, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lindros. I think, you know, there needs to be a little bit more work done on it, uh, Ramon. And it's like, uh, Councilman Stevens said, let's table it till next meeting. And maybe we can, we can, uh, have a game plan going.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
You could just go ahead and say you're gonna table it.
Yes, uh, then I move that we, we table, um, uh, this action item and, and until we can, uh, until next meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Lucy seconded.
Lucy seconded, okay, any discussion? None, okay, all those in favor of the motion to table it till the next meeting, raise your right hand, please.
Four, Betty, looks like you stepped, stepped away.
Okay, so four, and anybody against? I guess she abstained, so the motion carries, we'll go ahead and table it till next month. Okay, city councilman comments and answers, let's start with Mr. Stevens.
I will approach the mic and Lucy, uh, you probably wanna do that too. I don't have much comment, again, I thought it was a good discussion and, uh, apologize for not bringing the correct mic and, uh, we'll look forward to a, uh, easier communication the next meeting. I, I would note that the number of people here at the Civic Center is, uh, is good, we're all socially distanced, we're wearing our masks, and I think it worked out well.
Very good. Councilman Escuelo.
I really like that we were all able to either be here in person or Zoom and have that option. I also want to express that the people know that they can go and ask for the local ballots, not that, that, you know, they have that option. Thank you.
Thank you, is, is Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes, I think we had a very good meeting and we covered a lot of different subjects.
Okay. Councilwoman Olivas.
Uh, again, good meeting, thanks to all, and, uh, we see you next month.
Okay, councilperson Curry.
Um, I really enjoyed the presentations and the discussion and, um, I'm really excited about the animal ordinance passing, so thank you guys.
Okay, got a little bite in it now, huh?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, I was over at the election at the polling, uh, uh, office today and over seventeen hundred people have voted in the early voting. And in the city election, which we have one contested race, there have been over six hundred. So folks are coming out and I want to thank the citizens of both the county and the city for doing their civic minded duty and coming out to vote, it's your, it's your voice, for that. Y'all have a good evening, yes ma'am?
If I may, I just wanted to update today at five o'clock when we did close, um, early voting, uh, the city elections had a total of seven hundred and twenty-three votes, which is, um, the first time that we've had more than five hundred votes in a city election.
Wow, and that's, cause I was there about nine thirty this morning, so there was a hundred votes come in and great, that's fantastic. And normally, you know, you know, city elections, we don't have the populace come out to vote, you know, uh, usually maybe three hundred max, and this time it's seven hundred now, great job.
And we still have another week, um, early voting goes through October thirtieth. And then, of course, election day is on November third.
Thank you for that, okay, great meeting, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
You return.
Okay, and there's no debating on that. We're adjourned. Y'all have a good evening, great meeting.
Bye.